Mr. Christian?
Yes, Ann.
Good afternoon. We are ready when you're ready.
I appreciate that, Ann. We'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission for the Town of Hilton Head Island for June 16th to water. And are we in compliance with FOIA, Ann?
Yes, sir. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act and the requirements of the Town of Hilton Head.
Thank you, Ann. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Stevens? I'll skip Levon for now and go back to Ms. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Alfred?
Here.
Mr. Theodore?
Here.
And Mr. Christian?
Here. And I understand we have Jennifer Ray, who is going to do a little presentation to several of the commissioners. And are you going to do this by virtual means, Jennifer? And there is going to be some type of reach-through-the-screen on this?
Well, hopefully by now you have received, those of you that are leaving us after this meeting have received your crystal award. But I have one here for those of you who have not seen one before. Those should have come to you in the mail. And I just want to say I'm honored to be here today to thank Mr. Christian, Mr. Theodore, Ms. McGowan, and Mr. Stevens for your service to the town. Not only have all of, I have bios and huge lists of all of your accomplishments on Planning Commission, seven years, six years, three years, seven years, doesn't count BZA, DRB, and all the ways our plan, all the ways that this group has served. Your leadership on the Planning Commission, your commitment to the town is very much appreciated. And just want to say thank you. Don't be a stranger. If you have not gotten your crystal award, please let me know. We'll make sure that that shows up for you. And thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Jennifer. And, you know, I echo your comments to the outgoing commissioners. And, you know, thank you all for your service. And I'll have a few words to say at the end of our meeting on that as well. The staff have any changes to the agenda, Ann?
No, we don't.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve our agenda? All right, Leslie and Michael, and all in favor, aye, just put your hand up in the air. I believe that is unanimous. Do you have that, Ann?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, we have our meeting minutes of June 2nd, 2021. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes? All right, Stephen and Leslie, Stephen moved it, Leslie seconded. Any corrections to the minutes? All right, hearing nobody piping up, all in favor, put your hand up in the air again. I believe that is unanimous, Ann. Any objections, any abstentions? And passes unanimously. All right, appearance by citizens.
Yes, sir. Public comments concerning agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the open Town Hall forum, portal, excuse me. We didn't receive any comments, but the record from the open Town Hall portal was provided to the commission for review and made part of the official meeting record. In addition to submitting comments on the portal, citizens were provided the opportunity to call into the meeting and give comments. We have one citizen who would like to speak during today's meeting. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mark Baker is on the line.
Okay, thank, thank you, Ann. I'd also like to make note of the fact that Councilmember Stanford Lennox and Harkins are joining us on this, this call and for our meeting today. And Mark, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Thanks, Peter, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission and staff for giving me the opportunity to come before you today. Again, my name's Mark Baker. I am here today as a member of the Greater Island Council Sustainability Advisory Committee to present a resolution regarding solid waste management and recycling for Hilton Head and Beaufort County. And Peter, has, have all of the commissioners received the resolution?
They have.
Okay, thank you. The request that we have before you today is to review this resolution and then hopefully forward it on to Town Council with a recommendation for approval. First, a little background, the Sustainability Advisory Committee of the Greater Island Council was created in 2012, following the mayor's task force Future for Vision for Hilton Head 2025. Some of you may have participated in that master planning effort and report. This report identified 11 key initiatives for the future of Hilton Head Island. And one of those initiatives was to create a Sustainability Advisory Committee to promote sustainable options, policies, and practices for Hilton Head. And Peter and I both have served on that committee with many others over the years, evaluating how to enhance Hilton Head Island's and Southern Beaufort County's position as it relates to sustainable practices. One of the first tasks the, this committee undertook was a baseline sustainability assessment to evaluate where the island was at the time and what practices we might undertake to enhance our position. This report had broad community support and funding. It was largely funded through private sector contributions and was finished in 2015. There were several categories covered by this report, including waste management, energy, water, transportation. And if you haven't had a chance to look at this report, I would encourage all of you to go onto the Greater Island Council's website and look under the Sustainability Advisory Committee's tab, and you can find the baseline sustainability assessment, a very good report of where Hilton Head Island is as it relates to sustainable practices. What we identified was that the way we manage waste was a, probably the highest opportunity for advancing our sustainable practices and the one that was most pressing and is most pressing today and the area where we can make the most improvements in the short term. In addition to that, this topic is very timely today for several reasons. Now, I'm not going to go through and read all of the wherethes and therefores, but I would like to touch on the key points in the, in the resolution. First is that the Beaufort County landfill in Jasper County is nearing the end of its lifespan. This is very significant. To build a new landfill will call, cost upwards of $100 million, and that cost will be borne by all of us as residents in Hilton Head Island and throughout Beaufort County. Very important for us to get our arms around that. Second and third, the landfill operation agreement with Waste Management, who has had this, has had this operation agreement for many years, is nearing the end of its term and up for renegotiation in 2025. This, this is really significant in that it gives Hilton Head and Beaufort County the opportunity to reposition the way we manage our waste stream. And it prevents, presents a tremendous opportunity to emphasize the way we recycle and, and capture that recycled material and divert it from landfill and extend the life of the landfill, which can have significant economic and environmental benefits to all residents. So this landfill agreement takes years to negotiate, and it's very important that we begin that process now. The county is engaged in this process. Hilton Head needs to be participating in that negotiation because it has a significant bearing on us as residents here on the island. And the new agreement can have, not only help us manage our recycling and sustainable practices, but reposition us in the world of tourism as we, as we begin to promote ourselves as a truly sustainable community. So Greater Island Council recommends that the new agreement be negotiated with the following. First, require the landfill to be open during peak times. And I don't know if you realize this, but the landfill is not open on the weekend. So all of our seasonal turns that happen on the weekend, they can't take that landfill waste to the landfill. Second is invest in a recycling and processing transfer station. This is something Beaufort County's solid waste management team is very excited about, and Hilton Head should get behind this and promote it. And basically what this would be is a sustainability campus. And it would allow us to take all of the recycled materials that come off of Hilton Head Island and throughout Southern Beaufort County and take it to a processing center so those materials can be moved closer to the retail market. Just think about all of the glass that comes off of Hilton Head Island. That huge volume of waste is filling our landfills. It could be sorted in ground to sand or, or aggregate and sold and processed and used. The same is true for cardboard, aluminum, paper, plastic, all of those materials, once they're processed, they have higher retail value and can be sold or reused. And this is also true for landscape debris. Landscape debris can be captured in ground and turned into mulch and become a very valuable commodity instead of filling our landfill. So the sustainability campus is a very important endeavor, one that we should also consider. And then it would become a transfer station as well so that all of the haulers coming off of Hilton Head Island can, can go to this transfer station and not have to go all the way out to Jasper County for the landfill and save tremendous amount of fuel and hauling. And then that material can be processed. And then finally, Beaufort County pays for the landfill disposal fees, but not the recycling fees. Now, think about that. All of the haulers that go to the landfill today can dump waste but are charged to place the recycled materials in the landfill, which is a huge disincentive for haulers to take recyclable material and process it properly. So right now, they're charged for every load of recycled materials they take. So let me just close by reading the last statement on the resolution where it says "now therefore," and I would encourage you to take a close look at that. So now therefore, the Greater Island Council of Hilton Head Island and Bluffton strongly encourages Hilton Head Town Council and Beaufort County to take a leadership position and work together and begin negotiations with the current landfill operator, which is Waste Management, or with potential landfill, other potential landfill or recycling facility operators, and be proactive in developing a new long-term agreement that will secure the landfill and recycling needs of Hilton Head and Beaufort County. This resolution was ratified by the entire Greater Island Council of Hilton Head and Bluffton on May 6, 2021. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring this important initiative to you. And, Mr. Chairman, and I'll open it up for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mark, for, for that. Ann, would you go through the roll and ask each of the commissioners if they have a question or a comment on this particular topic for Mark?
Yes, sir. Mr. Perry?
I don't have any real questions, but, but I think that, you know, this is exactly what we need to be doing and really focusing concerted efforts on recycling and, and coming together with a true plan for not only the next 20 years, but really the next 50 years plus on how we handle our waste and recycling. So I, yeah, I, I think it definitely needs to be addressed with, with Town Council and the county and Bluffton Council.
Thank you. Excellent.
Mr. Theodore?
You're on mute, Todd.
Great presentation, Mark. I agree what Alan said is, you know, this is a long time coming. It just feels like Hilton Head is behind everything, you know, that, you know, a few years ago, they consolidated trash service and then abandoned that a year later, and it just seems like things have just been a mess. It'd be great to see Town Council step up and support this effort because, you know, it really, you know, it, it really doesn't represent what Hilton Head is. And, and I think it's important that we become more sustainable and look to better recycling practices. And I go to the, the local transfers or waste station over here on Hilton Head, and it's amazing the amount of garbage that goes through that facility. And I always wondered why all those containers were piled up on the weekend. Now I understand why. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. McGowan?
I have to agree with my colleagues. It is surprising how behind we are in recycling compared to more urban areas, actually. Do you expect to have any problems finding, again, a location for a transfer station?
You know, that's an excellent point. Beaufort County is looking now somewhere south of the Broad for a transfer station. We think that it would take about 100 acres. There are other communities that have these. Ori County has one. They really become tourist destinations because people go out, it's fascinating to see how waste is separated, managed, and processed, you know, today. People are very excited about taking electronics or, you know, any material and then seeing, you know, gosh, what's this done? You know, large fields of landscape debris, for example, are being ground and tilled. Hilton Head Plantation has a great example of this. That material is being ground and, and processed and then given back to homeowners as mulch. You know, why do we put that in the landfill? So about 100 acres, I believe Beaufort County is moving forward with it. What we need, though, is to get the Town of Hilton Head behind this and really sort of press the, press the go button and get everybody excited about it and try to make this happen, really make it become a reality.
Thank you, Mark. No other questions.
Mr. Alfred?
What is the current status of efforts in this direction by the town and the council? Anything happening?
Beaufort County has a, had a Director of Waste, Solid Waste Management. That person retired, and now Dave Wilhelm with the county has taken it over. Public, Public Facilities Committee for Beaufort County, which I believe is chaired by Stu Rodman, and Stu actually serves on our Sustainability Advisory Committee. Stu is very excited about it. You know, council is a large body. We need to make sure that County Council advances this agenda. And it would be very helpful to have our council, the Town of Hilton Head's council, to collaborate and join forces with county. You know, have our town manager work with the Beaufort County manager. Let's put pressure on all of our council members or get the message to them that, you know, this has to happen. We, you know, Hilton Head has been promoted as a green and sustainable community, but guys, by today's measure, the way we measure, the way we process waste, the way we consume energy or water is a, you know, there are a lot of topics and waste is, is the number one. So there's progress, but, you know, we're at a point now where it really needs to happen soon, given these, these contracts coming up.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Yeah, two things here. Mr. Stevens texted me. He was wondering if y'all sent him the link again because he's trying to sign on.
We'll work on that.
Okay. How long do you think we have left in our current landfill?
We've been told the landfill will reach capacity in five years. If we were to, to, to fully initiate a recycling process and divert that huge bulk or volume of, of a waste from the landfill to processed and sellable and usable materials, we think we could extend that 15 years. So then the question is, what happens next? Well, Waste Management, who currently operates our landfill, would love to have the contract to take our waste. They would take all of the material. Now, what they would do is combine all of our recyclables and all of the waste and put it in single trucks and, and take it to another county or another destination and deposit it. So, you know, one might say, well, what's wrong with that? Well, the, what's wrong with it is that, number one, it's not environmentally conscious or, or the right thing to do. But the other reason is that we pay for every ton they haul. So, yeah, they want to haul, you know, volume. So it would be extremely expensive for us to do that. But we think five years is the current life of the landfill, but we can, we, we know we can extend that by embarking on a solid waste recycling program.
Okay. Yeah, that's all.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, I, I think this is long overdue, and I'm highly supportive of it. Coincidentally, I'm taking a trip through the West with my daughter for 30 days, and I'm watching attention shift to the environment very quickly here as we drove through the Rockies where there were forest fires and down through the mountains where there were empty lakes and rivers that are running at 10% capacity. So I think if you refer back to our plan and the steps that we have outlined there to get ahead of the environmental issues we have, I think it'd be very wise for us to pay a lot of attention to this, not only on the waste management thing, which is, which is really kind of a, a no-brainer in a way compared to some of the other things we have to get on. So I'm highly supportive.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
Let me echo what Mark just said. I want to thank the council and Mark for your presentation today. I'm wholeheartedly support it, and I think the questions that I had have been already answered, so thank you. I'm, I'm much in favor of this.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Christian?
Well, I, I need to first make a full disclosure statement. Mark and I chaired the committee where this particular resolution emanated before it went to the entire Greater Island Council. So obviously, I'm very much in, in favor of it. But Mark, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions that I already know the answer to. And talk to the commissioners and those watching us, the ineptitude of the current system of the county paying for tipping fees and how recycling is handled from a financial basis.
You know, it's really upside down when you think about it. And as, as a group, we've lobbied hard for the county to change this, but what we keep hearing is that it's very difficult to change under the current, under the current environment because Waste Management has a contract. And that, and under the terms of their contract, what they, what they do is they charge, they charge haulers to place recyclable materials. So think of all the trucks that leave Hilton Head Island. They come through our community, they pick up, you know, we, we try to be good citizens. We separate our, our waste from our recycled material, and they pick that up and they take it, take it to the landfill. Well, when they get there, they have a truck full of recyclable materials. They're, they're, they're asked to pay to place it in the recycle area, but, but for free, they can, you know, they can take it to the, to the waste area. So to what I mean, it's just a completely upside down. Now, we don't know that our haulers are doing that, but, you know, logic would tell you some certainly are. They're placing what, what should be recyclable material in, in the, in the waste area. The second thing that we're, that we're doing wrong here on Hilton Head Island is that it's single-stream. Anybody who's in the recycle business will tell you that single-stream recycling, where everything is mixed together, is really garbage, it's waste. We used to sell that material to China. Well, they soon, you know, got smart to realize, listen, that's, you know, it's really, it's really trash. So what we should do is separate that material at the home, have separate containers, and then have that picked up in, in separate bins for glass, cardboard, paper, trash, and then take that to our processing center where it can be even further moved to the retail market and processed so that then that product is sellable and it's usable. Plastic is clean, the paper is clean, the cardboard is clean, the glass, you know, all of these materials have tremendous value if they're not blended and become garbage. So, you know, we've got, we've got several things going against us, but the biggest is the darn policy that says, you know, you have to pay to have it, you can dump waste for free, but you have to pay to pay, you know, put recycle in. It's upside down.
And Mark, you touched on this a little bit. Talk about what, what is the difference between the convenience centers that we presently have that are funded through the county and a transfer station?
Yeah, now, what we're proposing, a transfer station by itself would not really be a sustainability campus. But, but a transfer station is important for many reasons. When trucks leave Hilton Head or any part of Beaufort County, they have to drive all the way to the landfill, which consumes a lot of fuel and a lot of personnel time. If we can have a transfer station closer to the island, then our haulers can save money and time on personnel and, and place that material in a central gathering place, and then it can be compacted and, and taken to the landfill. That alone is not the solution. What we need to do is have that transfer station be the sort of beautiful sustainability campus where recycled material, you know, where everything is separated, and then you're only transferring the waste to the trucks that go to the landfill, and the rest of is, is processed and, and returned to the marketplace.
Now, how, how many acres are you talking about for that transfer station if it was on an island?
Yeah, probably not going to be on the island, probably 100 acres. It could be done in 50, 50 acres. But, I mean, if you go to Ori County and some of the other communities that have, I just got back from Tallahassee about six months ago, and while we were there, we were cleaning out an office, and I had an entire carload, SUV load of electronics. We took that to their sustainability campus, and it's this, you know, really cool setting that, you know, you, you can drive up if you have electronics, you go under a, an awning, you know, a covered area, and they, you know, they come out and off look. So the, it's, and then, and then, you know, the, do you have a different area for landscape debris, you know? So it, it takes a good bit of space, but if done properly, I'd say 50 to 100 acres.
The, the other thing, and talk to this a little bit, Mark, the convenience centers have disincentivized or really are prohibiting commercial contractors from leaving their waste there, which leaves them to go all the way to, to, to the, to the landfill, which is quite a distance. And can you talk a little bit about illegal dumping and how that has, you know, affected that particular?
You know, it's funny, when, you know, every action causes a reaction. But when the contractors had a convenient place to place construction debris, which, which were our convenience centers, and many were using it for construction debris placement, a lot of the smaller, non, sort of, non-mainline contractors may seek alternative places to, to dump that debris. And so one of the byproducts or the, the secondary effects of closing a convenience center is that we're going to begin to see throughout Beaufort County, illegal dumping, you know, that can happen on the side of the road. Somebody's going to pull down a dirt road and dump a load of debris because they don't want to take it to the landfill. So, you know, we, we've got to be better managers of our waste stream. Even construction debris can have a tremendous amount of recyclable material if managed properly.
I have one more question of you, Mark, but I see Levon has just signed on, and we welcome you, Levon. I, I think you're on mute right now. Do you have a question or a comment on Mark's presentation?
I apologize for, for being late. I could not get the connection and find the email. Mark, I don't know what I've missed, but what comes to my mind is the disaster that happened out in Jasper County where there was this huge pile of burning stuff. Can you talk a little bit about how these sites are managed and as far as safety to the people and the environment?
Yeah, thank you for that. Good comment. You know, a properly maintained landfill operation, whether it's recycled material or, or the landfill itself, has to meet government regulations. Unfortunately, that was a privately-run operation that, you know, one might question, you know, how valid the permits were, and certainly the operator was not managing to code and following regulations. But, but think about it, you know, large amounts of any debris is going to or could potentially have environmental contaminants. So if not properly managed, then, then that material can, you know, can contaminate the environment. But on the other hand, a lot of those materials have tremendous economic value and are going to the landfill. So if properly processed, those materials can have tremendous economic benefit. But a sustainability campus and transfer station would have to follow federal and state guidelines to make sure that it is done in a safe and, and convenient way.
Understood. And even in the best of environments, there's still some risk. Is that correct?
Yeah, sure. That's why we have to make sure that we do it well and do it right.
Yeah. I mean, because I guess the other side of it, if we don't, then it's even more dangerous. So, yeah. Anyway, I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Levon. Mark, what, what is your ask? What, what would you, what would you like the commission to do with this information?
Well, I'd like the planning commission to advance this resolution to council with a strong recommendation to take immediate action on this particular aspect of our community's sustainability, and that is waste management. It's very important that this happened now because of the timing of the current, the current contract with waste management coming to an end, and the current life of the landfill is nearing its end. And, you know, with inaction, we will all be faced with significant increases in our costs to have our waste properly managed. So, you know, I would ask that the planning commission prepare a brief statement that says that this, this topic is important. And to council, please, you know, please advance, advance this agenda item, move it up. The, you know, I know town council has a lot on their agenda, but please move this up to the top and, and take action on it right away.
Thank you, Mark. This will have to be a joint action between the local municipalities and the county.
Yes.
All right. Anyone else have a question or a comment? All right, you know, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to advance this resolution to the public planning committee of the council or other appropriate, you know, for consideration?
Approve.
Okay. Well, Mark, you had your hand up first. You have a comment or were you moving?
I was moving.
Okay. Well, you'll get the motion now because you beat Mike by a nanosecond. And Mike will have the second. All right. So the motion is to advance this resolution from the GIC to the appropriate committee of the county council.
And town council.
And town, I'm sorry, and town council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, for that. All right. Teresa, would you, Teresa, I'm sorry, Ann. Force of habit. Teresa, would you please call the role on that motion?
That's totally fine. Mr. Theodore?
Approve.
Mr. Stevens?
And you still called her Teresa, but approve.
Ms. McGowan?
Approve.
Mr. Alfred?
Approve.
Mr. Campbell?
Approve.
Mr. O'Neil?
Approve.
Mr. Perry?
Approve.
Mr. Scanlon?
Approve.
And Mr. Christian?
Approve. And thank you so much, Mark, for that presentation and taking the time to move this forward. It's a very, very important initiative.
Well, you're quite welcome. And thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to come before you today. Thank you.
Thank you again, Mark. All right, new business. We have a withdrawal of a zoning map amendment, and that is going to be heard at another time, Ann. Is that correct?
It is uncertain at this point. That may be the case.
Okay. It has been withdrawn for the time being, but there is no set date for this being brought back to the commission.
At this time, we're unsure whether the application, which has been resubmitted, will be heard on July 7, but we will let you know for sure as soon as possible.
Understood. All right, commission business. I believe we have any further business. Chairman's report, you know, I would just like to take, you know, the opportunity to thank all the outgoing commissioners. I have been privileged to work with extremely professional folks who are well-intended. And Leslie with the LMO, absolutely incredible job with all of the items that have come before your committee in a constant stream and the work product that your committee has produced. Todd Theodore with, you know, the CIP, and, you know, I believe Todd, through the actions of your committee, now the town, the new town manager is actually going to put together a plan to prioritize, though, on a, on an annual basis, so we can focus on getting each of those things accomplished and funded. You know, something that, you know, from year to year, we've, you know, put the priority together, but, you know, sometimes it gets done and sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes there's money for it, sometimes there isn't. But very, very well done. And Levon, the Gullah Gichi Task Force, incredible job. I know that work is not yet completed, but it has moved forward. And so many, you know, positive things have come out of the work of that task force. And, you know, with you at the helm, you're going to be, you know, sorely missed in that position. I know that the, the commission is going to be in very, very good hands with Michael and Alan at the helm. I do not know, and I don't think staff knows at this point, who the new folks are going to be on the planning commission. But I know that work will move forward, and we're in very good hands. And it's been an absolute privilege to work with all of you. And moving on to committee reports. Todd, anything on the CIP?
No, but I would like to say the same thing, that it's been a pleasure working with everybody. I know commission's going to be in great hands and look forward to the progress that the, the new commissioners will contribute to the planning commission. And it's been a great six-year run. Actually, like Jennifer said, it's been 12 years for me. I was on DRB and then rolled over into planning commission. So I don't know what I'm going to do with myself now. So really appreciate it and was an honor to be a part of the planning commission team.
Thank you for your service, Todd. Levon?
Yeah, I certainly would echo the outgoing commissioners. And it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with the colleagues on the planning commission and certainly the town council and the staff there. I'm really humbled. I've learned a lot. I've learned, it seems like the more I learn, the more I learn how much I don't know. But it has been an honor and a pleasure to work with people who have some professional integrity and, and understanding that while I'm leaving this position, I'm probably still going to be pretty active in the community. And I say that hopefully in a whisper, so people don't find other things for me to do. But, but again, it's been a pleasure. And Peter, with your leadership, and certainly when I came in, under the tutelage of Alex Brown and so many others, I don't want to start calling names, but those in leadership position, I've certainly learned a lot, and I hope to be able to use it in the future. I want to thank the community and the public for the trust that they have been given to us to play this part in this part of the community. So thank you all.
Thank you, Levon. Very well said, and thank you for your service. And Michael, the comp plan, I know that you're going to say, but I need to point out that, you know, Michael, you were at the helm of that whole process and, you know, with an unbelievable staff support, and you accomplished a very, very mighty deed.
Well, thank you. But there was two years of work by the development team and Todd and lots of others who were involved with that project. And so, Peter, let me say to Leslie, my teammate, we came in together, took our oath of office together, and I'm sorry to see you go, Leslie, but you did a great job with the LMO, and you're going to be tough to replace. Levon, I've learned an awful lot from you. You say you've learned a lot. I've learned a lot about the Gullah Gichi Task Force and the cares and the needs and the wants of the, you know, Gullah Gichi community. And Todd, your expertise, sitting next to you at LMO meetings and other places, including the development team, you're integral in the thinking of what went on in that plan. And Peter, all I can say is that you're an outstanding chair, you're an outstanding public servant, and even though you run a whole community on your own, you still found time for the entire Hilton Head community, and we're better for it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Leslie, LMO?
Passing the torch to somebody.
You're being far too humble. And echo Mike's comments. You did an incredible job, and I hate to see you step down. You just added so much to the commission, and you will be sorely missed. And do not be a stranger.
I appreciate that. It's been, it has been a privilege to work with all of you, bringing a high level of broad experience. And, you know, as a resident of the island, I feel good that we have volunteers such as this. The other shout out is to the staff, who I know are here somewhere. Beyond working with us during normal times, they were able to bring us back to work during pandemic, and, you know, we still made progress and moved forward. And that was, that wasn't easy. I plan to continue volunteering somewhere, but for now, we're going to take some time and do some long delayed, or at least one year delayed, traveling. So.
Good for you.
God bless all of you.
Safe travels.
Thank you for that, Leslie. Alan, your swan song for rules, I am sure you're going to be in a different position.
Well, let's just say that I'm batting 100, right? Nothing to report, but, you know, all I can do is reiterate what everybody else has said about working with a great group. And having this experience with all of y'all as well, it has made it a true pleasure. And it is a learning experience for everyone. And I do appreciate the time that we've had together. Just sorry it's been more on, on video than in live, but wish you all the best.
And just, go ahead, Levon.
I'm sorry, Alan, were you finished?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should report to the commission that on yesterday, we had the first reading of the family compound and family subdivision from the work of the task force and the staff, and it was passed on yesterday. So that's something I think that we, as the task force, and certainly the planning commission, can be very, very proud of. We still have a lot of work to do, but it feels like we actually got something done yesterday. So I wanted to make sure I shared that with the commission. Thank you all.
Thank you for reporting that, Levon. Okay, finally, I just wanted to mention a couple of you have done it tangentially. You know, Ann Siron, our staff liaison, just an incredible amount of work. We very much appreciate all you have done. Ann, Jennifer Ray and Taylor Lad, who worked on the comp plan with us and the development team. Teresa Halli, who provides us all with our almost daily emails about what we're supposed to do and where we're supposed to be, and gives us all the information that we need, just an incredible job. And Terry Lewis, for her work on the LMO committee, just an excellent group of professionals and just an absolute pleasure to work with. Anyone have anything else they'd like to add for the good of the order before we call for adjournment? Now, again, it's been a privilege to work with all of you. For many of you, this is your last meeting. And looking to those who are continuing on to carry on the fine work of the planning commission in our tradition. So thank you all. Your motion to adjourn.
Thank you, guys.
So moved.
Okay, Levon, Alan, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Take care.
Bye-bye.